All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. It's two o'clock. Certainly want to be respectful of everyone's time. I really appreciate everyone being here. Why don't we do this? I want to just sort of set the tone for today. We will go through introductions and go through what the agenda is. But as we set the tone, I want to first thank our managers, mayors, and all staff that have been working on this issue. We know that it's an important issue for the community. We know that folks have been working hard. The Board of County Commissioners have been able to speak to or hear from our staff and hear from Medic. And we really want to open up an opportunity to hear from our city partners and colleagues and our town partners and colleagues. It's important to us to get that perspective. And so as we navigate today, the goals of this meeting, just so we're all clear, are going to be, again, to allow commissioners that are present to be able to hear from our partners and colleagues. The second goal for today is going to be to provide visibility on ways concerns can and will be addressed. The third goal for today is probably the biggest goal, and that is to provide assurance to the community that we can work through our issues, we can find solutions, and that lives are not and will not be at risk. And so the commissioners that will be actively participating are Commissioners Powell, Vice Chair Altman, and Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell. Commissioner Powell, as you all know, represents the northern towns, and Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell represents the southern towns. And Commissioner Altman has just been, as the Vice Chair, has been intricately involved in gathering information and being intricately involved in these discussions. Also today, we want to make sure that this is not an opportunity for us to point fingers, but it's an opportunity to focus on solutions. It's an opportunity for us to provide a framework of working together. I've had the opportunity to speak to, I think, most of the mayors, with the exception of one. And I want to just thank each and every one of you for just the spirit in which you are approaching today. I think it's very important for us to maintain that spirit. And so, but I did want to give you all a special shout out. I did hear from mayors that also said that how important our fire chiefs are, and I certainly want to acknowledge our fire chiefs that are here on deck today. Want to thank them for their work and putting their lives on the line, along with our partners for Medic. The same thing, our first responders are heroes in the community, and we want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for your work. So I wanted to take that opportunity. And so the way we'll approach today, we'll do it in buckets. We'll start with introductions. We will have our colleagues from the towns and the city to be able to provide some comments. I am going to ask our staff, I'm going to ask JP to provide some feedback to those initial comments. We'll drill down on some specific issues, particularly response time improvement, some short-term solutions or interim solutions. Folks have teed up a third-party study. We'd like to understand the purpose of that study and the proposed outcomes for those that are suggesting that. Commissioner Powell has teed up Medic hold. And then we also want to touch on the budget. And so with that being said, I'd like us to start with introductions. I will start to my left with Sean, and we'll work our way around.
Sean Heath, City of Charlotte, Assistant City Manager.
Becky Hawk, Town of Matthews, Town Manager.
Gina Hoover, Mayor Procham, Town of Matthews.
And I'm Woody Washam, Mayor Cornelius.
Andrew Grant, Town Manager Cornelius.
Jamie Justice, Town Manager Davidson.
Rusty Knox, Mayor Davidson.
Jackie Huffman, the Deputy Manager Huntersville.
Nick Walsh, Commissioner in Huntersville on behalf of Mayor Christie Clark.
Yvette Townsend Ingram, Board of County Commission at Large, Mecklenburg County.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin, County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell, representing North Mecklenburg, Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mark Jarrell. Been elected by the people of District Four. Also have the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Board.
Good afternoon. My name is Lee Altman, County Commissioner, serving at large, and I also have the privilege of serving as Vice Chair of the County Commission.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell. I'm elected by the people of District Six, which includes Matthews, Mint Hill, Pineville, Lower Still Creek, and South Charlotte.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five on the Board of County Commissioners.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm John Peterson, the Executive Director at Medic.
Good afternoon. I'm Dina DiOrio, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Sidney Fletcher, and I currently serve as the Board Chair for the Agency Board at Medic.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Ryan, incumbent County Manager, and also serve on Medic Board.
Good afternoon. Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager, Chief of Staff, Mecklenburg County.
Good afternoon. Brian Welch, Mint Hill Town Manager.
Good afternoon. Ryan Spitzer, Town Manager of Pineville.
Good afternoon. David Phillips, the Mayor of Pineville.
And I also see Councilman Graham. Would you like to introduce yourself, Councilman?
Councilman Graham Charles, District Two.
Thank you. Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone, please. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take this opportunity to give Vice Chair Altman, Commissioner Powell, and Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell a minute to provide a statement.
Thank you. I would like to simply say I see so many friends and partners and close collaborators in the room. We have done a lot of work together on a whole host of issues, and I'm just grateful for your willingness to come down here today so that we can talk about these issues, as I know that together we will come together to find solutions that ensure we serve all of our residents and support our first responders, Medic, and people who go out to protect us every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I think the most important thing today is to make sure that we're listening to all stakeholders. And as Chairman Jarrell said, to assure the public that elected leaders are committed to finding the solution on the best service delivery possible, to make sure that we are responding as rapidly as possible to emergencies. And it's really like extra, extra important to me because my background is healthcare. And when I was driving here and thinking about all of my experiences with the fire department and with Medic, I've never had to worry about whether or not they're going to work together to save lives, to respond to emergencies. And I don't want the public to be concerned about that. So your elected leaders are committed to finding a way to provide the best service that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo my colleagues. Really happy that we have so much participation here from the towns and really appreciate everybody coming down here today. You know, I'm here to listen and to really try to dig in and find out what the biggest concerns are from our towns. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. And what we're going to do is just move into the, move into the agenda. Again, there will be four participating commissioners. Other commissioners are here to listen. And so now it's our turn to listen to everyone, and what we'll do is we will just start with the City of Charlotte. Sean, you're just on the end. Madam Clerk, what we're going to do is start out with about seven minutes for, up to seven minutes as a first round. Hopefully that will allow folks to really level set and just really address the items that we discussed. You know, where you are around this third-party study. What are your thoughts on that? Response time, any concerns that may be top of mind for any of our colleagues, things that you'd like Board members to know and to understand would be really helpful and give JP and Dina something to possibly react to. And there may be some questions at some point as well. So with that being said, we'll start with you, Sean.
Thank you. And I'd first just like to thank the Board for holding this meeting and pulling it together on such short notice. It's a meaningful conversation. And I'd also like to start to echo a number of the sentiments that have already been shared. The City of Charlotte really wants to continue to lean into this and find a solution to this challenge. As it relates to the two or three specific areas that you cited, we're certainly on board with the idea of a third-party study. I think it's important to recognize that, at least from our perspective, best-case scenario, that's likely a multi-month sort of an exercise. So that's more of a medium-to-long-term path forward, in our view. It doesn't alleviate the issue we have associated with the July date associated with our contract. We'd certainly be open to hear other perspectives on that, but A, we're very open to the idea of it, but B, we don't think it would provide a solution to address the early July expiration date for our agreement. And in terms of some of the broader issues, I had a chance to listen to the meeting from last week, which was, which was really helpful, particularly the Q and A. And as we've shared before, really, for us, while the subsidy is a piece of the equation unquestionably, and the way I think the city has characterized it is looking for equitable treatment relative to the towns, you'll recall that we have a flat subsidy in our contract that's approximately $499,000 a year, whereas the towns have a per-call rate, which I believe is a little bit north of $21 per call. If you look at our FY '24 data for the City of Charlotte Fire Department, we had over 84,000 Medic-related calls. And if you do the math, the 84,000 compared to our $499,000 subsidy, that equates to a little bit less than $6 per call compared to the town rate, the per-call rate of in excess of $21. So that is part of the equation, certainly, but I think what our fire chief has emphasized with me and our city manager, that really we think the bigger conversation is around the non-financial considerations related to the EMS service delivery model itself. In particular, the dispatch protocols and resource utilization questions. If you look at the universe of calls that CFD is involved in, there's a sizable percentage of those calls that are low acuity, so these are not life-threatening calls. There are also calls that are first responder-only calls. Those two pieces of the universe of calls that we're involved in, and really along with the overall number, put stress and strain on our resources. So part of this collaborative solution is finding an operational model that meets both Medic's needs and the Charlotte Fire Department's needs. So that's really where we would want to start the conversation on solutions, is on the non-financial piece, with the financial subsidy part of the equation still on the table, but secondary to those other first-order considerations. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, you want to go?
Sure. Again, just want to echo a lot of what I heard from my colleague to the left. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come together and speak about such an important topic. The Matthews interests are similar to the City of Charlotte's in that we certainly want to focus on the existing service delivery model. And the way that the reporting is currently provided by the contract dividing into just the three different service areas for Medic, it doesn't provide a clear picture of what the actual service levels are in many of our individual communities. And so I know in the most recent presentation from the Medic Executive Director, it did start to drill down a little bit into what those smaller service districts are actually seeing from a service level, and they are not where we would like them to be. And so we want to certainly echo that we are supportive of additional funding for Medic to be able to increase the existing service levels that are part of the contract to make sure that there is equitable service delivery across the entire county, regardless of the way that the reports might require the data to be shown, that when you drill down, regardless of how you slice it, that people can rely on a quick response from Medic regardless of where they are in the county, and certainly in Matthews. And we're seeing that that just isn't the case right now, which to us is just about, it's about resources and it's about funding. We've all grown, and more needs to be committed to be able to deliver that. On the data front, Matthews has been asking for some of that more detailed data for a couple of years because we want to be able to know what is being delivered to our community so that when citizens call and they have a complaint, we're the ones who take those calls. And so being able to understand, is this an anomaly? Was this an outlier of a situation where something happened? Or is this a symptom of a larger issue? And we have not been successful in being able to get that data to date. And that would be very important to all of us, to be able to work together, to be looking at that information all at once, to really know what we're dealing with. Again, not to point fingers, but to say if there is an actual problem, not looking at the data doesn't mean there's not a problem, and it's the only way to actually solve it. We do support a study moving forward to look at what would be the desired service delivery model and the desired level of service for the entire county. We've got priority-one calls that Medic handles right now, and so many of these other calls are being handled at the town level and at the city level. And we understand that there are other models in places in other counties, there are other financial models in places in other counties. But right now, you know, Medic has said that they need us as part of their service delivery model, but we're kind of getting mixed messages as far as any funding or any contractual support for being able to deliver that service. We don't feel like it would be right for us to be answering these calls without a contract in place. We have not issued any ultimatums or any letters to cancel that contract, but from a liability standpoint, working under the Medical Director of Medic is very, very important so that there is consistency in care, there is consistency in direction, there's coordination of service. And so we do believe that a contract is important, but ultimately, we feel like it's up to the county to determine what is the desired service level that you would like to see county-wide, responding to all levels of priority calls. And then what does it cost to deliver that service? And so whether that is continuing under the current model with a different funding that goes along with responding to those calls, or if Medic, or, excuse me, if the county ultimately decides that you want to shift and have somebody else answering those lower-acuity calls, that's okay, but appropriate compensation should come along with that. The Town of Matthews has had to increase its fire and EMS budget 50% over the last two years to be able to meet our levels of response that are required in our community. Our funding level has remained $60,000 through this agreement. And so we have, of course, had to pass those costs along to our residents, but it is ultimately a huge amount of our operations that are dedicated to the first responder levels of service. And so it, you know, I don't know that many people in the room were a part of the original contracts. I don't know that any of, any, any people can answer some of the questions of how some of these things came to be, so much as the existing model isn't working. But we do feel like it would be best to do a study so we can all look around the same information together as far as recommendations, instead of arguing about what's done elsewhere or what should we be doing. We can all get the same information, and ultimately, the county can decide how best to move forward with appropriate funding for whatever level of service you ultimately determine for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Washam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to say that public safety, without a question, we've asked our citizens a number of times as one of the top-ranked priorities, you know, within any community, and certainly ours is no exception. With that, Medic is certainly an important arm of that. You know, police and fire are critical. Medic is just as critical, particularly if it's not working quite right. So with that, I will tell you that the three North Mecklenburg towns are totally aligned with our concerns. We're in the same zone. And I'm going to defer to my colleague, Mayor Knox, over here to give you a little more details about that, and I will follow up some of his comments if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's fine. Absolutely. Mayor Knox.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Manager, for putting us together for this. This is very important. Couple things, in doing more research than I felt that I should have to do as an elected official for something that I'm not a subject matter expert on, I want to start and preface by saying, once Medic gets there, there is zero complaint in the quality of service that's provided, JP. So that's kudos to your folks, because once you get there, you're doing a good job. For me individually in Davidson, when I'm waiting on an ambulance, I've got eight firefighters that are on a shift, four on this truck, four on that truck. If my truck's waiting on an ambulance, I'm down 50% in my town. I'm literally down 50% of my firefighting capability. But I read an article that was published in July of 2018, and a couple of things that I gleaned from that, if I could share. Number one, the five hallmarks of a good EMS agency. Number one, hold the emergency ambulance service accountable. Number two, establish an independent oversight entity. Number three, account for all service costs. Number four, require system features that ensure economic efficiency. And number five, ensure long-term, high-performance service. The other thing I gleaned from that article was flashing back 20 years. In the mid-'90s, the Mecklenburg County EMS system was failing in a very public way. Newspaper headlines reported long response times, firefighters complaining about waiting on the scene for ambulances to arrive, and residents, particularly those on the outskirts of the county, were noticing the poor service. I will tell you, when I got elected in 2017, I started this bar back and forth with Joe Penner and got to tour the new facility and everything, and holistically, the service is great. What, what we are looking for on our end, our portion of the money that the county contributes is $34,000. It's, it's not a lot of money. When we figure that about 42% of our budget is spent on EMS calls, that should equate to north of $1 million, about 1.3. So that $32,000, it helps. It's not, it's not the end-all, do-all. But what, what I see today, where our communities stand, where Medic stands, where the county stands, in this, in this dialogue that we're having, I think it's really important to walk away today with, with the understanding that what we would like to see are two things. Number one, we'd like to see the existing funding stay in place for now till we can figure this out. And number two, the third-party study, I think is very important. I think a lot of us agree that that third-party study will not just be advantageous to the towns in the county and to the county, but potentially it could be advantageous to JP's organization with Medic as well. Our managers have met, and we've kind of come up with a benchmark for what that scope of study should be. And at some point, I would like to share that with, with you guys so you understand better where we are. But I think, at the end of the day, I am not a subject matter expert on this. JP is. These folks behind me are. I'm an elected official, and I'm bound by my promise to my constituents that I'm going to take care of all 16,000 of them in the best manner I can. That's with police, that's with fire, that's with Medic. So at the end of the day, this is, there's a solution out there that can be had, and that's why we're sitting at this table, is to figure out what that solution is and move the ball forward down the field. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Washam.
Following back up, thank you, Rusty. Our town is certainly in line with the need for the study, in our opinion. Neither, I'm a banker, I am not a Medic expert, and I know there's people in the room that are certainly way more expert than I am, but there's lots of good solutions out there. Now's the time to get it right. I think that's, that's the key component that I would, I would say to you, and I think we have that opportunity. And to me, the expert advice we would get through a study would be the answer to do that. So we're firmly in favor of that study, and we like to provide that encouragement to the commissioners that are here to follow in that direction. Back to Rusty's point, 39% of our calls with our fire department are Medic calls, their first responder-type calls. And if we converted our budget to the cost, it would be around $800,000. So with that, it's pretty significant. And, you know, we, we're not going to let our citizens down. I will tell you that right now. We cannot do that. It's too critical. So we want the right solution, and I think we've got a good forum here to get us in that direction. But I do think there's some changes that are going to have to be made. The performance in our area versus goal, it's around 68% versus a goal of 85%, and that's just not good enough for our area. We're not satisfied with that, and that's kind of why all this came up. You know, it's, Rusty's exactly right. When Medic arrives, they do a great job at just getting them there. And we're the farthest-out area as far as the mileage and the timing, and yes, we have traffic. You've got to figure that in the, in the equation for sure. So those would be the comments I would add at this time.
Thank you. Let's move to Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you. I'm not going to, whoops. I'm not going to repeat what some of my colleagues here have said. Certainly, we're very interested in a, a study. When we talk about service delivery models, one of the biggest challenges we have is that we are sending fire trucks, and by the contract, we have to, we're sending fire trucks on every call, every medical call. So if somebody falls down and breaks an arm, a fire truck's coming. So we're sending a million-dollar fire truck with four people on it, and then we're sitting there waiting for Medic to show up, because we can't transport them. If it's something more serious, a heart attack, we don't have the drugs aboard to do that. And so when we talk about a service delivery model, we need for, whether you call an ambulance or Medic, those guys to be responding to medical calls. We certainly, on the case of, you know, car crashes or rescues, are there to assist. But, but we don't, we don't need fire trucks responding constantly across the Town of Huntersville to every skin, knee, and everything else. So it's a challenge. It's a challenge from a manpower standpoint. I mean, just a year and a half ago, the town took on the responsibility of building out a municipal fire service, so we're very committed to public safety. What we can't do is what Medic can do. In terms of cost, I think our chief has looked at roughly a $1.6 million impact to our town to provide that first responder service, which we're required to by the contract, and we're getting about $100,000 in compensation. But really, it's not about the money, it's about what's the best system to serve the citizens of Huntersville and the rest of Mecklenburg County. And that would be building out the Medic system so they're in fire stations, stationed permanently, so they can respond and not have fire trucks responding on every call.
Thank you. Let's move to Mayor Phillips.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And let me start by saying, I also appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to have this meeting. I too want to see us all come to the table, and it's not about, you know, what we want the Town of Pineville or what another municipality may want. I want us all to work as a group. I'll echo on what Mayor Knox said, is I too decided to run, and when elected, I was going to represent all the constituents equally and fairly. And I don't know a lot about this. I'm new in this role, so bear with me, but what I will say is I have 30 years' career in first responder, and I assure you, none of these issues that are being discussed today have anything to do with our fire, Medic, and police officers. Their DNA doesn't allow that. They're going to serve, and they're going to try to reach out to help anybody that needs it and wants that assistance. So let me start by saying that. But I think truly, when I reviewed the meeting from the 15th of last week, I watched it, and you know, what, what I kept thinking was that, you know, years ago, when this contract was first put in place and this time went forward, you know, our department had a lot of volunteers in it, and a lot of those volunteers were certified EMTs. And so we had the ability to have people there to run fire calls as well as EMT calls or medical calls. Well, over a period of time, volunteership within fire departments has sort of drained and gone away. Now... gone away. Now everything is, you know, a lot of our staff is Charlotte Fire or Rock Hill Fire Department officers who are serving, or firemen who are serving for us on their days off. So, you know, it plays a big role in, you know, in what we do. We want, you know, this to be resolved. And I'm not trying to say it's one individual's fault or one department's fault. Because like I said, I know they all want to work together. And the town of Pineville is willing to work with it, too. But I agree, what needs to be done, in my opinion, is that Medic probably needs to have additional members in place, and the proposed districts enlarge from three to six. And what I would like to see is maybe that take place, if possible. But in the meantime, I am glad we're all here at the table. Because this is the most important thing, is getting together, discussing this as a group. So, but that's what I would hope to see. And like I said, from a standpoint with Pineville, we will keep serving, and we will keep responding to medical calls and fire calls. But it is a constant fear on our part that something's going to happen. A prime example, this past weekend, we had a house fire in one of our neighborhoods that, thank the Lord, was held into the second floor, and it didn't spread. And we were able to put it out. But the whole time I was thinking about this, it kept resonating with me, was what if we'd had a medical call right before that? And we couldn't have got there. So, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we think about. But I assure you, and I'll echo it again, that these first responders are here to serve in any way they can. So I would just ask that we do look at this third-party study, and consider what can be done, and then continue to move forward. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Welch, you want to go next?
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Mayor Simmons apologizes. He has some medical issue he's getting taken care of. I don't talk for the sake of talking, so I won't rehash what's already been said. I'll just touch on three things real briefly. It's certainly supportive of the study, and anything that could help enhance the provision of the service that's currently being provided. The data is kind of a big issue for me. I think as a partner, it would help me help you, if you will, if I had a better grasp on when and where the calls were happening as it pertained to our particular area. The contract, little weird little anecdote here. Mint Hill, up until a few years ago, provided an ambulance service. We were the only other folks in the county that did that. So we have a long history with that. You know, it was a volunteer organization then, and it's a municipal organization now. But a lot of that's baked into who we are and who we will always be. We want to go on these calls. We are going to go on these calls. Money's great, but we are going to go on these calls. So, you know, we certainly have made no overtures towards getting out of the contract and have zero intention of doing so. However, you know, when all this talk of contract, as it starts to, you know, manifest itself, if it turns into a county-wide negotiation, I mean, it's important to me, quite frankly, and I speak on behalf of my mayor when I say this, that we want to, the underlying state statute, where we need to be under the medical director to respond to those calls, I mean, I want to do that, right? I'll take every dollar you want to give me, but I want to be able to respond to those calls because it's what we've always done, and it's what we're always going to do.
Thank you for that. I think we've heard from everyone at this point, and what I'd like to do at this time is to be able to open up to colleagues for any thoughts, initial thoughts, initial feedback, prior to going to JP than to county manager. So we'll start with Commissioner Altman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate the feedback. It's very helpful for us to hear unfiltered what each of you is seeing and experiencing. And I'm going to share with you kind of the way I'm trying to understand this issue. And I, because I'm a lawyer and I learn by arguing, I want you to argue with me. I want you to tell me where I'm confused or where I've got it wrong, because that's just how I sharpen up, you know, complex issues. So from my point of view, there's the financial side of the problem, and there's the service side of the problem. And they are related, but they are also separate. You know, on the service side, I'm really interested. I hear you, we hear you. I know the manager, and JP hears you. And we all are actively looking to find ways to improve service. When you came in, JP, can I refer to as JP in this forum? I don't know if that's how you generally...
Yes.
Okay. When the Director of Medic came to our last meeting, he previewed, I think it's fair to say, a lot of improvements and responsive measures that are being taken to improve service. I heard discussions around, you know, perhaps SUVs that have people with first responder training who could be deployed instead of a fire truck. Or, you know, the 300 fire stations in the county, there are only about 70 Medic trucks. So we need more manpower. And so that's an idea that you're talking about. I know that there's a real recognition that the holds which keep fire in place while you await Medic, you know, is a problem. And it should never be the case that a fire emergency doesn't get addressed because you're on hold for a low emergency medical problem. And I think there's clear recognition of that. I think that that's, the manager's office has already agreed that that is, you know, a priority that we all understand. And correct me if I say something that is not right. I think there's already a recognition that smaller districts are needed, that the three-district layout is not giving enough granularity to the problem. And Medic is already working to develop an enormous improvement upon that that could really yield the benefits that we're looking for. You know, I'm interested in ensuring that when you have what you believe is a failure of the system, that we are tracking that and investigating it, so that if there's a pattern, I think maybe you said, Becky, if there's a pattern, that we recognize that there's a pattern of a problem and we can address it. And so, you know, I don't want you to hear when there's a problem, oh, well, that's just anecdotal. Like, I want us to track and ensure that we understand a pattern if there's one emerging with the service issue. And, yeah, so on the service side, I feel like, if you listened to the last meeting at the Board of County Commissioners, that we are, that the Medic and the county manager are in process to develop really responsive innovations to address these concerns. The other side of the House, though, is the financial piece of it. And this is where I'm really hoping to hear some feedback from y'all. You know, I began my career working for the Attorney General of Georgia, which is a different state and a different system and a different time, but it was public service. And I remember that the AG said to all of us employees, "It's a full day's pay for a full day's work." And so, you know, what I understood from our last meeting at the county commission is that, you know, the municipalities are levying a tax for fire service, and that approximately 65% of the time, fire departments are not responding to fires. So if they only were to respond to fires, they would be not engaged quite a bit of the time. And so, you know, and so, but so they're being paid a full day's pay for a full day's work, but if they only did fire, they wouldn't be working a full day. And so that is the sense in which I do, I want to hear your feedback. It seems like a double taxation for the municipalities to tax the residents to pay a fire person for a full day's pay for a full day's work. But then, there's the request for a subsidy on top of what the taxpayers already paid for, you know, one day of work. And so, that's really what I need to understand, especially in the context where it appears Mecklenburg County is the only county in the state of North Carolina where the county is sending such a subsidy to municipalities. So it seems like we're an outlier with the practice. And I assume that this, my understanding is this habit, this practice arose before the municipalities started levying a local tax, and that we never sort of went back and revised it. But now, in this day and age, we need to look at that. And so I hope I've explained it clearly. And if so, I'd like to get feedback.
Sure. I think Commissioner Altman really summed it up, I think, really eloquently. I think for us, you know, we really believe that the subsidy, we really know, the subsidy started at a time where the towns did not have municipal fire departments. It was all run by volunteer fire departments. And so they didn't have taxing authority. So the county provided a small subsidy to offset the costs associated with providing medical calls. But that was in the 1990s. We're in the 2020s now, and that is a completely different landscape. And we believe that municipal fire departments, their role is to provide EMS first responder services. That is a primary role of municipal fire departments, not just in North Carolina, but across the country. And as she indicated, there is no other county in the state of North Carolina that provides a financial subsidy to municipal fire department for EMS services. And so while you're taxing your residents for this service, you're now asking Mecklenburg County to tax everybody again so that you can provide the same service. We provide you a subsidy. We're not buying anything. We're basically writing you a check for a service that you're already providing. And I think that's the fundamental difference or disagreement that we have with regard to the subsidy.
So, can I?
Yeah, Mayor Walsh, if you want to respond.
Thank you. And I'll ask my manager to kick in, too. So, to be clear, we do not have a fire tax within the town of Cornelius. There is a fire tax in the ETJ. So, that is not correct.
It's a town tax.
We have a town tax. We have property tax, just like the county. It's property tax. And out of that, we do fund our fire department, which does do this service. So, that's the rest of the story on that. And I think, you know, it gets into a fundamental question. And I'm not being, I'm not in an attack mode at all, just really asking this. But my understanding is that it is the responsibility, per state statute, that the county provide these Medic services. We're talking about up and down the scale, whether it's first responder or the Medic piece of that. And if that, my question, I guess I should ask first, is is that true? And if so, where does our role come in to actually funding that particular service?
Are you able to answer that, or is that something we need to park and lot?
So my understanding, and I'm not an attorney, I'm also not the expert of the state statute, but there are attorneys in the room that can correct me if I'm mistaken with this, is that my understanding is that the provision within that state statute is to provide ambulance service. It is not all-encompassing. I could be wrong, but I think that needs to be verified.
And let me just say this. I think as we tee up different questions, when we don't have the answers, our clerk is here collecting those questions. So we are committed to making sure that we circle back so that we're all on the same page with respect to answers. And I appreciate the spirit in which, you know, you're asking that question. I think it's in bounds.
We have a lawyer who's agreed to stand up and actually speak to this.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Patrick Kelly. I am the Medic's counsel. The statute in North Carolina states that counties are ultimately responsible for overseeing the ambulance services in the county. It is then up to the county to decide what that looks like. There isn't anything that I'm aware of that suggests what level of funding is required, what response times are required, or even frankly, whether anything is required. So ultimately, the statute is not going to give us the answer to this question. Certainly, some government entity is responsible overall for ambulance services, and our legislature has seen fit to assign that to the counties. They could just have easily have said, "It's the town's responsibility." But I don't think it addresses this fundamental question about the fire department's roles versus the Medic's role. Because the cities are generally responsible for fire. The county's responsible for EMS. Somewhere between those two, the cities and the counties have got to figure out how this all works. The legislation isn't going to tell us how to do it.
May I ask a follow-up question on this? If the statute isn't clear, and if 99 out of 100 counties are not sending a subsidy, is, in your experience as a lawyer, is it fair to deduce that it's presumptively not violating the law since there has been no other litigation that, or are you aware of any litigation for non-payment of a subsidy anywhere else in the state?
I'm not aware of any requirement of subsidizing the fire departments as part of the EMS systems. And in our discussions with the NCO EMS about this, they confirmed that that is not a requirement.
So let me add to that. Please, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we're going to let, sure, absolutely let you go.
So in regard to that particular topic, in some just light research that we've been able to do, it does appear that the per capita funding for some areas of the state is larger than Mecklenburg County. So then the question comes down to, how do we compare in the per capita funding for Medical Services that we're talking about today? My perception is that it's low on the totem pole as it relates to some of the major metropolitan areas. I could be wrong, but it's probably something that needs to be looked into to make that comparison.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez-McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to go off of this topic if, I mean, my question is, if you want to keep on...
Hold on, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, let me go to...
Go ahead.
She's going to be off-topic. She's moving to something else. I thought she was on this one.
Well, in response to what Medic's legal counsel just said, if the statute is that vague, I think that's validity right now to look at doing this third-party study, to be more finite in what the roles actually are, what the deliverables actually should be. For a statute to not give any benchmarks to response times and any other factors, as he alluded to, I think that in and of itself should be enough validity to say, we need this study to dial in on how we can deliver the best product that we can for our citizens in Mecklenburg County.
Thank you. Let me go to Becky, please.
Sure. Thank you. Really, what I picked up on from what the attorney said is that it's up to the county to determine what level of service you would like provided countywide. And I think that's really the linchpin in all of this, is that we are with, we are all living with a model today that has transport provided by one entity, and then lower acuity calls, triaging, and then also assisting with the higher acuity calls provided by the towns. And so if you take the funding off of the table for a second, that's just what the model is. And I think what we're all saying is, there are other models in place. And so respectfully, Commissioner Altman, you know, to say that no other county receives funding, or no other municipality receives funding across the state, A, we were doing some research that called that into question as far as, does that even exist? But also, what are those models? And so to say that, well, there's no funding tied to those, it may not be looking at the entire picture of how EMS service is actually operating in those other localities. And so some of our request is to look at some of those other models to really understand, how are they working holistically, as opposed to it really coming down to funding. But on the funding side and on the workload side, when I look at my fire department, they have, due to necessity and due to contractual obligations, they have grown and have continued to fill a role of answering the lower acuity calls, assisting with higher acuity, and triaging, because there's nobody else to do it. And so if that responsibility were to go away because a different model was adopted, I just want to say for the record that I would fully support my fire department continuing to exist as it currently does. Because there's training that they have to do, there is PT that we want them to make sure that they stay in great shape. Calls right now are getting stacked. And so they are, you know, needing to not respond to calls as quickly as they might be able to otherwise, because as much as we have increased service, the need is still greater than the existing staff. And under the FLSA, if they are waiting to be engaged, then that is compensable time. And so it is okay that they are a full-time employee, even if they're not necessarily running call-to-call-to-call. If they were sitting in the station, working on training, and then they got a call, they can run out the door and answer quicker than right now if they're over here and something else comes in and we're needing to call and have somebody come from a different department. And so to say that there wouldn't be enough for them to do, I would certainly argue with that and say that there is plenty for them to do. And if anything, we would also be able to increase our levels of service delivery if we weren't under this contractual obligation. We are happy to continue with the contractual obligation. But as far as the double taxation, I do want to touch on that just a little bit, if I can have the floor for another minute. We currently fund our fire and EMS department through our property taxes out of necessity because the model does not sufficiently fund the services that we provide. And so we would have been happy, over the years, if our revenue from this contract had kept up with our increased levels of service, we would have been happy not to pass that on in the tax rate that we currently charge our citizens. But we haven't had a choice because right now, our stipend only covers 2% of our fire department's medical expenses. department's medical expenses. It's about 1% of our overall budget. And so, if the model were to change and if we were to receive additional funding, we would have two choices. We could either roll our tax rate back, because we would have a new revenue source, and we wouldn't need to charge our citizens the current tax rate, or that revenue would be available for other needs in our community. So, it wouldn't necessarily be an issue of double taxation in the slightest. What we're doing today is merely because we have no other way to fund the services that we are contractually forced or required to provide, but we currently do not receive sufficient funding in providing those services.
Okay, thank you for that. Hold on one second. Let me turn to my right, anybody. So, let me go with Sean first.
I can be quick. I just wanted to underscore, Commissioner Altman, you made reference to the financial and the services components, and I like the way you framed it as separate, but related. I still feel like the study, in terms of the order of operations, can be of great value so far as the service delivery model, because I think if we can find clarity on the service delivery model, it helps all of us reframe the financial piece of the equation, because right now, I think there's a lot of uncertainty. I think reasonable people can disagree about what fair looks like, but we all know that since the original agreements were in place in the late '70s, this subsidy concept and philosophy has been built into the model. And things have changed dramatically over those years. It's unquestionable about that. But I think if we can get real clarity on the service delivery piece, it makes the financial piece slightly easier to answer.
Thank you for that. Okay, let me go with Andrew first.
Thank you. In response to Commissioner Altman's points, so just Cornelius data, 39% of our calls, as Mayor Walsh mentioned, are medical-related. So, the majority of our calls are fire and rescue, which is, I would argue, and I think the people behind me would argue, that is the primary purpose of our fire departments, fire and rescue. We have inherited, if you will, medical responses. And we have, as my peer to the left has said, we have had to subsidize that with our property tax rate. And I'll give you, like, just a simple example here, very similar to what Mayor Knox mentioned. For decades, we've been running two-staffed fire trucks in our town. Roughly three years ago, we had to add a third fire truck. And so, all of a sudden, we've, just for those costs, we've increased our cost by 50%, just by adding a third fire truck. And the primary reason, as I think my fire chief would agree, is due to medical calls. The other item I wanted to point out, Commissioner Altman, because it's mentioned many times about how other counties do not provide funds to their fire departments. And as Becky mentioned, we've been trying to validate that. And as we've been validating that, we were discovering there are other models out there. So, Mecklenburg County actually is unique. All of your fire departments, all the fire departments that are represented here today, they all run, and again, just want to break down and cut through all the minutia, because it's very confusing how this works. There are what's called emergency calls, high acuity, and then there are non-emergency calls. I'm not saying they're not important, but they're non-emergency, they're low acuity. And out of the low acuity calls, again, just for Cornelius data, 2/3 of our medical calls are low acuity. 2/3 of our medical calls are non-emergency. So, when you hear, you know, my peers around the table talk about time being held for our fire departments while they're going on these medical calls, when there may be a more important, I'll put air quotes around, a more important call to go to, that's substantial, when you have 2/3 of our medical calls that are being responded to that are non-emergency. And back to the question or the concern about, you know, other counties don't provide funding to those fire departments. And again, very small sample size, we've just started some research, but to the majority of the fire departments we've reached out to across the state, they are not providing responses to non-emergency calls. They are providing responses to emergency calls. So, therein might be, and again, I'm drawing a conclusion before we get to the study, but that might be one of the reasons why some of the other counties are not providing funding to their fire departments, because again, again, my assumption is that their version of medic in these other counties are providing those non-emergency responses. Thank you.
Let me go to Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you. And I don't claim to be a lawyer, but I did ask our attorney, I said, "Who's responsible for EMS services?" And she looked up whatever this 143-517, which says, "Ambulance Support and Free Enterprise. Each county shall ensure that emergency medical services are provided to its citizens," and goes on to say a few more things. So, I think it's important we research who's actually responsible for EMS services, and to the point that nobody else in the state does subsidies to fire departments, et cetera. I'll have Jackie address that.
Thank you, JP. I really appreciate the comments that you made at the April 15 meeting. Two things and bullet points that stick out to me are typically, the fire departments are typically the first to arrive on scene by design. We've designed a system where the fire departments are going to show up first before medic. The other bullet point on that page that sticks out to me is that it's critical that partnership continue, and we're committed to that. Having said that, a couple of other things stick out to me from the 15th. One was understood there to be, there's no place in the state where there are contracts that exist between the municipalities and the county to provide this service, and that might well be. But I have been in local governmental finance for 30 years this past Friday. Looking over an annual comprehensive financial report is my bread and butter, is oxygen to me. I do it for fun, not because anybody asked me to. And so, there were specific, other counties that were mentioned in the state. I've printed several pages. I think there's one of the county reports, one of the other county reports, that's a 300-page audit. Nobody wants to hear about that. I don't want to hear about it much. But I printed the pages that mean the most to me, and there are two different counties. I want to leave you copies of specific pages of their audit report, where they comment in their statistical section of the number of calls that they have contracted with other departments. I don't know if that's a municipal department or not, but that does suggest to me that there's contracts between counties and other fire departments where they're going on calls. Please pay attention in Wake County, in Durham County, there is, in Forsyth County, Guilford County, that audit report I've dived into, and every time I look at a different page of their statistical section, I am enamored with a different statistic. And one of the things that makes some sense to me is, if memory serves, in the Durham audit report, there's a suggestion where they've specifically stopped asking their departments to respond to Alpha and Bravo calls. I have no idea what that means, but you have experts in the room that does. That suggests to me that there are calls that they are not asking other departments to go on. Please, please get into the meat of what those other counties are saying they do. The article that Mayor Knox referenced earlier, where the former executive director of medic was interviewed and gave interesting information about when the headquarters was built, I interpret a quote in there that says, "In Mecklenburg County in 2018, there were 72 ambulances," and it gave the number of those that were the advanced life support and the ones that were basic life support. Please don't take my word for what Guilford County's audit report says, but it suggests there's some 10-year trend data. They chose to put that in their audit report. There's no requirement to do so, but they talk about the number of emergency medical vehicles they have. Emergency medical vehicles likely include some administrative vehicles and vehicles that are not ambulances. 2018, the article suggests in Mecklenburg County, there were 72 ambulances. The 10-year statistical data in the Guilford County audit report suggests there's 106 emergency medical vehicles. I don't think all those are ambulances, but I think with a population roughly half of ours, they're attributing a lot of vehicles to the provision of that service that we are not. That makes me wonder if we're not being asked to go to calls that medic doesn't have the resources to respond to. And so, as the town municipalities have talked about things that we'd like to see different, we'd like for them to get more ambulances, we'd like for them to have more staff, because it's our hope that we'd be asked to respond to fewer of those low-acuity calls. I'll wrap up with this. My recollection is it's the Forsyth County audit report who specifically states their number of emergency medical calls versus non-emergency medical calls. I'm very thankful that JP is completely honest about what his response rate would be if we moved from three zones to eight zones. I'm very thankful for that. I appreciate in his presentation to you that he said what his priority-one calls would be. There are, I don't, priority-one suggests to me there's some priority-two and priority-three. If our firefighters are going on calls where it's not just life and death, certainly there are showing up those they should, but if our firefighters are going on calls where it's our job, according to the contract, to stay with a patient until medic has the resources to show up to make that transport, which we cannot do, what is the response time on the ambulances for those? There's somebody suffering there who believes they need an ambulance. I would like to hear some information about whether or not we're concerned about those calls as well. That, I think, will reflect how much our fire departments are waiting on those calls for the ambulance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. JP, do you want to respond?
Certainly. I can kind of respond to a lot of things, so if I can, as best I can. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Altman. I think that the first part of what you discussed there really overlays what I was trying to portray last week when I gave my presentation on the 15th. And so, I think you covered it well with that. There was one correction that I just wanted to make, that I heard stated, just so that everybody knows. Medic does not send the fire department on all medical calls. So, actually, 40% of the calls that are dispatched for medic do not include the fire department on the initial dispatch. I say "initial dispatch" because it doesn't mean that the ambulance arrives on scene and decides to request help from fire, and then they come out there. But on the initial dispatch, 40% of the calls that we send our ambulance to do not include the fire department. We try to do our very best to only use the fire department to respond to medical calls when we really need them. And I think that I've heard it echoed from multiple folks today that medic doesn't have the resources to be able to handle all of these low-acuity calls, and they are becoming more and more and more burdensome on our system, both for the fire departments and for medic. And I think we have a real obvious concern there of what's the best way to handle that and who is best to respond to that. When I mentioned in the presentation last week about, right now, if someone calls 911, we have two options. It's either us or, there are three options, us or the fire department or both. There's not another option. We can't say no, and we're not going to say no. If a citizen in this county calls for 911, we're going to go, and we're going to do our very level best to triage that call through dispatch and send the appropriate resource in the appropriate amount of time. I appreciate the support that I'm hearing from folks, I just want to say that. And, you know, each, there's a saying in EMS where if you've seen one EMS system, you've seen one EMS system. And that's because everywhere you go, in every community in this state, every community in this country, you're going to find something different, right? And so, when we talk about Mecklenburg EMS being different, yes, we are. We may be different and may be very different from other parts of the county, but the reality is, I think if you go into any county in this state, you'll find that they do it maybe a little bit differently. The model that we have, I think, was put together, what, in the '90s? It is a very efficient and effective model when it is fully resourced to be able to do. So, Sid, I don't want to speak over my board chair, so, I'm sorry.
I like you speaking, JP. It's perfect. I would just say, Lee Altman, thank you for the way that you framed that up. I think that that does sort of explain where we're at. And I would say that one of the things that JP and medic is absolutely committed to is a lot of the things that are non-financial that were in some of the, you know, questions that came up, whether that be things related to, oh, we need to go on a fire call, so you're not going to do first responder-type things. Medic completely agrees with those types of activities. JP, medic, and the board, I think, are very much also committed to, okay, right now, right, it's either ambulance, fire, or both. We need some kind of alternative to that, some lower-acuity type vehicles. I think that that is certainly in the future planning. And I do think that when you look at the system that we have today and the way that it's designed, we so appreciate the fire departments and what they do. I just want to reiterate that. I mean, we have to have them, and the way that they're set up and structured helps support the structure that was created for medic, so that, you know, we knew that that first responder component was there. And quite honestly, medic certainly wouldn't have the resources to be able to do all those first responder calls without the fire department today, the way that things are currently structured. We also wouldn't want it to be that there needs to be a fire truck at every fire station, because that would be over dup, that would be duplication of services and things that really are not needed for the county to be able to respond to our citizens in a timely manner. And the last thing I would just sort of close with is that the healthcare systems are really proud to be part of medic with the county. And I would just say that, I think you heard it today, but medic is a very, very high-performing agency. We do need some additional resources for the activities that want to be performed. And you've heard, we spent a lot of time as a board, sitting down and really looking at, how could we improve? How can we be more transparent with the data? And, you know, current state, I think that, you know, certainly we recognize that the three zones is not really working for us, and that we need to enhance our response times that are really, feel real to the citizenry when they call 911 and they're expecting a response. And we have really structured the system to be most accessible to those highest-level calls. And I think medic, you know, is certainly committed to making sure that we're doing that at a high level. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mayor Walsh, you'll get the last word before we move on to a different topic here.
Thank you. So, one real-life example I really want to pass on, just so you know, and I'm kind of speaking for all of North Mecklenburg, not just Cornelius, but many of you have, several of you have received, including the manager, I think, examples of situations that have occurred mainly in North Mecklenburg that really started all this concern out on our part. They're pretty attention-getting, if you will, but this is what I don't want to happen, and I certainly don't condone this by any means, but we are experiencing feedback from some citizens saying that, "Well, you know, when I call 911, I'm just going to tell them I'm having a massive heart attack, even though my leg's broken." That kind of setting is not what we want to encourage by not doing all we can to make this medic system as good as it can be. That is real conversation that's going around. And on our part, you can condone that or not, Mayor Knox and Nick. I mean, it's really, that could be very detrimental to what we're trying to achieve here, and I don't want to give anybody any reason for spreading things like that, but that is a real thing that is happening and is growing. So, that makes it even that more important to get a hold of all this sooner than later. So, that's just something I wanted to pass on to you, that as we were talking about this response categories, if you will, the non-emergency versus emergency and all those kinds of things, that could really muddy up our system and totally mess it up.
So, thank you all for your comments. Before I go, give me one second, I'm definitely coming to you. Before we go to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, the one thing I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, was that when JP came, you know, he talked about improvements and not specific to this issue that you just raised, but specific to response times and different things of that nature. And I was just going to ask you, maybe covering some of those things may address what the mayor's saying.
What I really wanted to say first is, I want to discourage anyone in the community from calling 911 and saying that they have a heart attack when they have a leg injury or something, as you just described. If you do that, then you are potentially taking a lifesaving resource away from somebody else in your community that actually needs it because they're having that heart attack. We, as was mentioned here earlier, we have 72 ambulances. That 72 ambulances doesn't account for ambulances that are out of service for maintenance or repair. So, at any given time, there's maybe 50 to 60 ambulances, right? So, it is a limited resource. right? So, it is a limited resource within this county, which is why we have to do our triage of every call that comes in to ensure that we're sending the right resource to the right patient. That's why we have tiered the system to an advanced life support system and a basic life support system. That's why we utilize our first responders to make sure we get somebody there as quick as possible to do an initial assessment, start life-saving care while we get the ambulance there. So, I would plead with anyone in our community who's even thinking about doing that, please do not do that. Remember, somebody else's life is on the line.
Totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let me move to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell. I think, you know, we talked that pretty extensively, so you can change topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess I wanted to sort of steer towards talking about this third-party study. Because I, I just, just for a little bit of background, I'm somebody who is very skeptical of spreadsheet people, you know, people who make decisions from spreadsheets. And I just want to say that I don't think JP is a spreadsheet person. And I have 1,000% confidence in his recommendations, his background, his vision of what he could do if he didn't have the barriers that he has. And so, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think that this group can talk about alternative ideas and, and maybe this is the perfect time because these contracts are ending and it's, you know, things are coming to a head, that we can talk about the barriers, the resource barriers that you have. Because, you know, I, I'm, I'm suspicious of the need, or I just don't really, I want to understand more why you guys feel a need for another entity to come in and speak to this. Because I think that, that everyone has expressed confidence in JP and in the job that they're doing when they get there. So, I, I just want to understand more about why we would need another entity to come in. I really want to make sure I'm hearing why you guys feel that we need an outside third party to come in with recommendations. Because I feel confident that JP would have recommendations if he had the resources. Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I, I just think that, you know, that's the biggest question. So, I'd love to hear if anybody wants to speak to why we need to have this third party come in.
Some of you have already spoken to it, so I would just limit it to whoever wants to tee up the, you know, the big rocks to answer Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell's question, please.
Can I add to her question?
Commissioner Powell would like to add to that question.
So, thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, because I have the same faith in JP that I think we all have. And so, in my district, North Mecklenburg, the number one priority from all the citizens, from my mayors, from commissioners, is a better response time. And how do we build a stronger medic with the limited resources that we have if other entities are trying to pull funding from the county? We can't build medic the way that it needs to be built with the consequence of explosive growth. And so, you know, how do we respond in a way that makes us stronger? We have to invest in medic. And if we're investing more in supplementing and what a lot of people believe double taxation, we're using dollars that would be better used building medic. And so, I just, you know, when you're answering the question about what the third-party study is going to provide, I think we need details on what you would like it to provide. And I just want anyone that's watching to remember what Mayor Phillips said. I love what you said. I think nobody can forget it. It's in the DNA of, of first responders and people who care to respond. And so, I don't want people to worry about that while we're figuring all this out. And I really love the way you said it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, who, who wants to tackle the primary part of the question?
I'll start out, and there's probably some things to follow. But to me, this is just something we can't take a risk with. It's that critical. We started out this conversation, I think any number of us said that we're not experts. I think you all agree, you're not experts. JP is the closest thing we got in this room, and I have a lot of confidence in him as well. He's, he's done some really good things. But what this study could do is validate the fact that he's either doing it right or there's better ways to do it. There's people throughout this country that would have input, and that will give us a resource of information to feel good about where we are or not. And I think without doing it, we're not going to really know until the experts that are really experts take a deep dive into making us the best we can be. There's nothing more basic than medic services that this county provides, I think, to our citizens. So, that's, that's my, my feeling on that. As, you know, whether, whether the right system is to retain our, our fire departments in this role, they, we're not going to walk away from it, I promise you that. But is that really the best way to do it? I, I don't know. That's, with technology like it is today, there may be other alternatives. And I think the other thing, if, if I were your board, that I would want to know is, how do I compare from a funding standpoint per capita to other people throughout the southeast, if you will? And I think, I think a proper study would tell you all that. But particularly in North Carolina, I would say you really need to know that. And, and I'm not sitting here saying that I've got the answer because I really don't. I could guess at it, but I don't have the answer. So, I'll, I'll start out with that. I don't know if anybody wants to follow.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just, I, I want to kind of add on a couple of things. Before I got elected in 2017, there was a deliverable issue with medic, particularly in the north end. It's 2025, we still have a deliverable issue in the north end. And i- if I thought for a second that the answer to this is funding, what do you need, JP? How many more ambulances to, to, to create in, in a perfect world? I mean, because...
Perfect world is, I mean, that's perfect world. We've asked for 10 this year with an, we want to evaluate a multi-year plan. There's an opportunity, we may need another 10 the following year. And so, it also all depends on what the system design ends up looking like. If we approve the eight zones and we want to use the eight zones as, as how we're going to fund and track response times, fund a medic and track response times, then we'll know how many ambulances there. If we're going to do it differently, much more granular, for example, that could create more ambulances. So, I hope that's answered your question.
Well, so, I'm a father of a firefighter. My son is a captain with the Wood River Fire and Rescue Fire Department in Haley, Idaho. And they house ambulances and fire trucks in the same station. And if they get an ambulatory call, they roll with an ambulance. If they get a fire call, they roll with the truck. So, this is a completely different model for me. And when I first met with Joe and looked at the static operations down there, and I didn't see ambulances up my way, I dialed down, we were getting ready to open up our second fire station, and we were at a construction point where I could, I could have added a bay. But Joe explained to me why we didn't have ambulances there. I, I think we, we've grown now. We've changed. I mean, we have 225,000 people north of Harris Boulevard now, in the north end of the county, by itself. So, I, I think that, that, that line of static operation and placement of ambulances is more crucial today than it's ever been. Even changing the zones from three to six in the map that I've seen, I think that's going to be advantageous. But I, I, I look at best practices, and, and historically, all of us in our municipal governments, including the county, have hired consultants to do studies to make sure that we do the best that we can for our citizens. And I, I don't think asking for this study is that far out of line to just make sure that the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and at the end of the day, the deliverable methods that we're using, everything from the call center to rolling out to being unseen, is the best that we can provide.
Sure.
I, I guess my question was, would be, why don't we do a study? I certainly wasn't in the room 30 years ago when, as I read the history of it, the partnership was formed between the county and the hospitals. Apparently, at the time, Charlotte Fire wanted to take them over. Again, wasn't in the room, don't understand it. But, you know, 30 years later, it may be time to revamp it. JP and I've had some discussions around. And I grew up in Fairfax County, Virginia. And just like the mayor here, you had, we called them ambulances back then, but you had ambulances and fire trucks. So, if somebody fell down and broke their leg, an ambulance rolled out the door. If somebody's house was on fire, a fire truck rolled out the door. If you had a crash, both pieces have rolled out the door. Here in Mecklenburg County, JP, I guess you call it dynamic, ambulances float around or medics float around. There's so much traffic everywhere, north end being no different, to have medics permanently stationed so that they, just like our fire, we're getting ready to build a fifth firehouse, because we don't want to be more than a piece of equipment being more than five minutes from a, a fire or a crash or whatever. So, again, 30 years ago, this may have made sense. It may not, maybe, maybe it still makes sense. I don't know. But I think the, the question is, why wouldn't we do a study? 30 years ago, when, I, I moved here in 93, when there was a fire call, firemen, mostly volunteers, showed up in their POVs, private off-duty vehicles with little red lights going, somebody ran to the firehouse and picked up a fire truck. We don't do it that way anymore. So, things have changed over the 30 years, and I think it's time to do a study to say, you know, if the majority of the counties in Mecklenburg, or I'm sorry, in the state of North Carolina, I'd argue across the nation, have permanently stationed medics, ambulances, whatever you want to call, what do we know that they don't know? Maybe it is still the best system for us. But I would say, why don't we do a study?
Okay. Let's go with Andrew. JP, do you want to respond to any of that right now?
Well, may I?
Absolutely.
So, just a, a quick piece, a little bit about my background. I have 25 years of experience in EMS. I'm a paramedic. And I have happened to have had the opportunity to be the chief officer of three very large urban EMS systems, obviously Mecklenburg County, but also Tulsa and Oklahoma City in Oklahoma, and Pinellas County in Florida. Pinellas County is the most densely populated county in the state of North Carolina. That ambulance service does over 200,000 responses a year. Tulsa and Oklahoma City, over 2.1 million residents when I was there. I'm sure it's bigger now. Both of those services do dynamic deployment, system status management, just exactly the way that medic does it today, as far as how we deploy ambulances and use our, utilize our resources. And as I have mentioned previously, utilizing, scaling up or down ambulances and, and units that we produce based on the day of week, the week, the day, the day of the week, and so, and the hour of the day, in order to make sure that we have enough, but not too many and not too little. Where I think what, you know, the things that I'm concerning is that we don't have enough right now is one of the things that I'm saying. But that type of a system allows you to expand and correct, expand and contract to be more cost beneficial and more efficient, financially efficient in that matter. If you do static deployment stations, and you're going to put a, a unit at every station and just leave them there regardless, then those units are going to be, like we said, static and they may not be, may or may not be responding to calls. It's a less efficient system. So, we actually have today what I think is more of a current, more up-to-date model. But, like, you know, to other folks' points, and to my point even that I made earlier, if there's this one EMS system, there's many other ways to do it. Our neighboring counties have some level of static deployment, as was mentioned, but they also utilize some, some level of dynamic deployment. Some of them are moving more toward dynamic deployment. Some of them are reaching out to us to learn how we do it, so they can learn how to do it, so they can provide better service in their communities. So, I think, you know, I just, I just wanted to say that. I don't know if, if Sid or anybody else has anything on that. Okay. Thank you.
No, that, that's helpful, JP. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. So, just, I just want to say ditto to whatever one said here on this side of the table relative to why a study is important. But the one thing I want to add to that, and then when I get to the point that was made earlier, is that we are all here today, everyone in this room today, to make sure that we have the best system possible moving forward. And unless we have an independent study, because I believe, Commissioner, that was your question, why does it need to be independent? And I'm not throwing shade on JP's abilities or experiences. But, and I can look at every manager in this room or director who has made a request to a board for funding for something. And we all go through this evaluation, if you will. And we say, well, hey, what, what do we really need? What's the, the thing that we should be saying to the board? And then quite often, and this is how it works, I have to scale back my recommendation because I know it's not going to get approved. And I have to give a, I'll call it a budget-conscious recommendation. I don't want JP to be in that position where he's making a budget-conscious recommendation to either his board or to your board. You, we need what's best for all of us.
All right. Thank you. A couple of things, JP, I'd like to, well, let me level set with the whole group real quick. You know, one of the things that was a part of the agenda items was this idea around double taxation. Obviously, we've covered that. We've heard the manager's perspective plus other commissioners on that. We've also talked about the third part, third-party study. And that's certainly a takeaway for us to, we've heard from everyone and appreciate the feedback. Also, I, I think, would, that leads me into our, our next portion of the agenda. Because when I think about the need for the third-party study, JP triggered something when we were talking about response times and the improvements that you wanted to actually implement, and some of the suggestions that you came up with. And I think it would be appropriate at this time just to hear from JP again. I know everybody watched the meeting and appreciate that. But I'd like, I'd like you to tee some of those items up that you think would improve service delivery, that would provide or answer or address some of the concerns that have, that have arisen over time.
Yeah, 100%. I think best place to start is to talk about how medic tracks and reports response times. So, in the presentation, I talked a little bit about raw response times versus contractual response times. Raw is, is essentially, we made a call or we didn't make a call, right? And so, those are the percentages, the data that you saw on the zone maps, the current zone and the proposed zones of medic's raw compliance versus how we report and are ultimately held accountable and responsible for our response time compliance, which is based on our contractual obligations with Mecklenburg County. Those contractual obligations offer and have a level of what are called exemptions. And so, without, it can get very confusing. So, without getting too deep into that, those exemptions are essentially items that per the contract are items out or, or instances that are out of medic's control, right? So, multiple calls happening at the same time, things like that. And in those particular types of instances, medic essentially doesn't count those against compliance. What I'm saying, what I presented in that presentation last time, is that what our patients and our firefighters really feel from our response times out there is that raw compliance, right? If we are saying that we are 81% or 98% compliant contractually in a priority-one response times, when in actuality, the real nuts and bolts response is 81%, that's something we need to improve on. And that's something that I've been working with my board on, and what's the best way to do that? The way that medic is resourced and funded today, we don't have the ability to be 90-plus percent with what we have. And so, we have to look at how we best evolve this system to get it to make the most sense as far as how we track response times, so that we can be transparent, that it is easily understandable for anyone in the public, and that so, you know, honestly, when I have a need, I can articulate that need. And then also, people can see it and understand it. So, the second piece to that is with regard to the response zones. And there's been discussion this afternoon about the three response zones. And if you, if you look at the map and the way those response zones are drawn out, they're very large and obviously very outdated, right? And that's another measure of how medic is held accountable for our response times that drills down into those three zones. So, my team has worked very hard over the last eight or nine months or so to look at that every different way they could possibly look at, to, to come up with what they think is the best, and most importantly, most equitable way that medic could provide quality-level response times. most equitable way that medic could provide quality-level response times in addition to our already excellent level of service that we provide as far as our clinical care is concerned. I want to, I want to make sure that I take a moment to just remind everyone that even though we are absolutely, you know, rightfully talking about response times, medic response times today, to the point that when we're on scene, the good work that we do, which I very much appreciate you all saying that, it's true. And our data shows that. We have some of the best clinical outcomes in the nation when it comes to how medic treats our patients, and we're very proud of that. We can do better, and we can do better with response times, right? And so, I think that if we take an opportunity to look at this and focus on the zones and build medic to be successful in those zones, then we are going to provide better response time service if we do that and if medic is supported to be able to grow to do that.
Do you have something? Was there?
Mayor Washem. One thing I'll add to the response time discussion, and I certainly respect all that, JP, is that I want to be able to look my citizens in the eye and tell them the town of Cornelius is getting good response. So, until you can give me that specific data, I can't do that. It's pretty important. And with technology like it is, I heard somebody down the table make a comment that, you know, you could, you could ride down a street and tell who's Democrat and Republicans now. So, surely, you could, you could give us an individualized by-town response percentages that would satisfy the same thing. So, I'm just saying, that's important to me to be able to, because you're never going to be 100% perfect. You're good, but you're not 100% perfect, neither are we, we're not. But, we need to justify that in some cases to some people. So, that piece of the data that you provide, I think, is pretty important. I know we've had that discussion, but it, as far as I'm concerned, it hasn't gone away yet.
So, the last, when I last had an opportunity to meet with the towns just a few weeks ago, we talked about that data potentially being provided by ZIP code. And brought that up as well in my presentation last week. And that is something that we are absolutely open to exploring. I've talked to my board chair, who's with us today. And that is something that we want to look at as we look at how we track and report response times, which is, the first thing that I said was one of the most important things that we do. Is this a component that is helpful to that and is meaningful? One of the things that I think is important is that, and I said this as well, is that we want to provide equitable service as best as we can throughout the county with the resources that we have available for us to do that. I want for medic to be able to have a target, a clear target, and a clear vision for us to build for the future so that we can, once we have the marching order, so to speak, we go and we hit it, and we're successful at it. So...
I would also just kind of use a word of caution, and that's that as you go to do that, we would have to move towards, you know, the system that supports the data that's being presented. So, what that means is, you know, if we go from three zones to six zones, and now we go to 100 zones, because, you know, that's what happens as you start to crunch out these little pieces of data, then we just have to all understand what the asks might be related to being able to resource that at a level that people are comfortable with. That's just part of being transparent with the data, is also knowing that that is the other, you know, whenever, whenever data comes out, right, then there's a response appropriately to what the data looks like. So, just something else to consider. But I know we've been having conversations about how we could provide more data. Thanks.
Thank you.
Was there any response or additional questions around that?
Yeah, I just would like to reiterate the importance of getting this data via ZIP code. And for me, I think this is measurable for you because it identifies where you're performing best and where you need work. And I, again, to what Mayor Washem said, I think in today's type of technology that we have, I think getting those numbers, we're not pushing a boulder uphill. This should be relatively easy to do. And I think there's where you measure your success. There's where you measure your need to improve. That simple.
JP, can you, because Commissioner Altman brought up this ZIP code issue during our board meeting. And you talked about some barriers that were, you know, made it very difficult to do that. Can you speak to that, please?
So, I think one of the biggest barriers is if we go, and we looked at this, we've looked at all the different ways that is best to adjust the zones and try to provide the most equitable level of service, like I said before, with also providing a reasonable way for medic to be held accountable based on the level of funding and resources that we have available. If we go to something, I think we looked at, looking at all fire districts, and we also, I think, looked at a bunch of different ways. It's like 22 zones is the number that I remember. And as the team looked at 22 zones, it would require an exorbitant amount of ambulances and resources to be 90%, 10 minutes and 59 seconds in 22 different zones, if that makes sense, right? So, we're trying to find something that will provide the best possible level of service, continue to maintain and improve our current level of clinical quality of care, while finding something that is achievable and reasonable. Is that, is that what you're, to answer your question?
Yeah, exactly. Because, you know, Mayor Knox was talking about the ZIP code issue, and I knew she addressed it or brought it up as well, and you addressed it. So, I wanted to put it back out in the atmosphere. Let me go to Vice Chair Altman, then I'm coming down to the end of the table.
I understand that, and everybody wants to be reasonable. I do think Mayor Washem has a fair point to be able to turn to his citizens, or each, every mayor, to be able to turn to their citizens and have transparency. How do you, you know, I understand ZIP code is very granular, but how about by municipality?
I actually think that as far as the report pulling, it may be simpler to do it by ZIP code, just simply by report pulling. But I would have to check with my team and understand what's the, because just, another thing for clarity and barrier for us is we don't have a report for this. This isn't like, we have the data, but this isn't like somebody just can go in and say, I want, I want this report. I have to have a person that goes in and looks at every single call and says, okay, where did this call occur? Okay, that one is Davidson, that one's Cornelius. And they have to, call by call, go through, and they have to figure out which call is where, and then they have to pull the data. It's a total manual process.
I understand that, but, you know, people's lives are, you know, on the line. And there's, you know, good faith concerns about service. And, you know, I understand if you're trying to measure ZIP code by ZIP code, you would have to add so many ambulances to the system that it would be just, you know, exorbitant cost. But to be able to report out town by town seems like something that is, I want to understand why that isn't a reasonable ask.
I don't think anybody has said it's not reasonable, that we're not willing to do it. I think what I've said and what I heard my board chair say is that's something that medic wants to look at and pursue and discuss with our board.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, JP, I got to take umbrage with that. At the last meeting on the 15th, you specifically said your board would not allow the release of that data. Am I wrong?
You are not wrong.
Not wrong.
I don't think we have the data to release at this point, I think is the bigger issue. But JP and I definitely talked after that, and we plan on bringing that back up with the board.
You guys don't have a database of all the calls you went on? And it's a simple attribute table, and you just select name, address, do away with that, so we can identify them, and then there's your data.
It's not, unfortunately, it's not that simple. It's that manual process that I talked about. And what I committed to in that meeting, which I did, was that I would call my board chair that evening and discuss it, which we did. And I also brought that to the table on the 15th to make sure everybody knew that we heard you and that we wanted to discuss that on how we could provide that in the future.
And what I'm hearing today is a willingness to really pursue that?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, thank you.
And I think also looking at, you know, again, what's the, what's the way that we can do that? Is it by town, is it by ZIP code? You know, what's the, what's the way that we can be able to provide that data? But that will come back.
Thank you. Let's go down to the end of the table here.
Yeah, thank you. We may be talking about two different things here. You've got a database with the calls in it. In fact, in your presentation, you overlaid 2024 data on your, I think it was eight new zones. So, the data's there. It's a simple report writer that can pull that out. How, whether it was 22 zones or five zones and balancing, that, I get that part. But there's no reason you can't go in and select 28078, which is Huntersville ZIP code, 1 ZIP code, and say, give me all the calls sorted by whatever. I mean, that, people were doing that 30 years ago with report writers. So, we're not asking you to say, how do you balance zones and response times? We're just saying, in the town of Huntersville, in the town of Cornelius, in the town of Davidson, give us a report that shows number of calls, response times, et cetera, broken down by type of call or whatever. That, that's, you're not going in one by one and reading it and putting it into an Excel spreadsheet. So, you're able to do it because you overlaid it on your 2024 data on the newer zones.
Director.
I'd like to address a couple of things. Response times and in the independence of the report and the ZIP codes. If we had an independent authority tell us what is the best idea, whether it's by municipality or whether it's by ZIP code or some other idea that's not been suggested yet, might that be a reason to do the independent study? Another reason to do the independent study, if I'm a patient and I call medic at 3:41, and if medic dispatches the call at, if I finish the call protocol and they dispatch at 3:46, and if the fire department arrives at 3:50, and the fire department sees that I am in desperate condition, and they call and ask for a change, for the ambulance to hurry to respond lights and sirens, and that comes in at 4 o'clock, and the ambulance arrives at 4:10, where did we measure that response time? To me, the patient, it was when I called. It was not when a call protocol changed. And so, an independent authority telling us how we should be measuring that might help multiple parties decide, you know what, best practices is measure it from here. And it's no longer Jackie's opinion, or the customer's opinion, or JP's opinion, or somebody else's opinion. This is an independent report. That's what I see is the value in the independence.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. This will be quick. So, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as to what the request is currently, the immediate request for the data. So, again, ZIP code towns, you know, what have you, fire districts, you know, we've talked about that. But we are talking about all priority calls, not just priority one, priority one, two, three. If there's a priority four and five, you know, those as well. And then raw and contract data. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, bye.
So, I would just like to say, so, going back to JP, so one of the barriers is funding, right? So, I think they only get money from when they transport somebody, right?
So, there's two methods that medic generates revenue. One is through our county subsidy, which is roughly 25% of our revenue. The other 75% comes in the form of fee for service that we build patients.
So, when we talk about...
Right, is your, is your mic on?
Yeah.
I think so.
Bring it closer to you.
So, so I would say, when we talk about funding, right, medic only gets funding, 25, what, 25% of your funding from the county? And you get 75 from the fees for service, right? So, when we talk about level of service, how much is the county willing to fund medic to get them to a state where they can be better response and get rid of those barriers? And I think that's what we need to, what you all need to figure out. Like, what funding, what, what part of that 25% do you want to grow to get them to a level of service that you all want for the county?
Thank you. You good? No, I'm sorry, no, 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 not right now. We're coming to budget in a minute.
If I may, I just want to clarify one thing about the report pulling. So, we are able to report by the zones because we have a specific report created for that. So, you're right, somebody goes in and pulls that. If we want to do it by geography, like by a town, somebody has to go in and figure out manually between town lines, right? Because that's not super easy to figure out between town lines. This is why I mentioned that I thought ZIP codes might actually be an easier way to do that.
Because there's ETJ that could fall within a ZIP code.
That's right.
So...
Can you, Dana, can you say that again, please?
The reason it gets complicated is because you have parts of the county that are in the ETJ, so it may fall in 28078, but that's a different responder than the town fire department. So, it's not as simple as just saying it's 28078, and you pull it, and it's done. So, there is some manual work that's associated with that.
And at the end of the day, I think, and appreciate what everybody's saying, but at the end of the day, the board chair and JP just said that they'll come back with a solution or some feedback. So, I think that's reasonable, I think that's fair. One of the things that would probably be helpful is for us to get, you know, when you guys go back to be able to discuss it, to give us a timeline, I guess, to say, okay, by, you know, the next couple of months, we can have this information for you, or whatever the deliverable date is. I think that would be helpful, that would be fair. We can go back and hash it out at that point because, for whatever reason, it does seem like this idea of ZIP code is something that would be useful and helpful. So, why don't we just try to figure that out? I think that's important. So, here's where we are, 3:45, we've got some time left. We've touched on this double taxation, third-party study. I think that keeps coming back in as far as why we, you know, what the benefits would be. Response time, short-term interim solutions as well as come up and been touched on. Commissioner Powell, I'm going to turn to her right now because she teed up an agenda item, medic hold. And I'd like her to tee that up and for us to react to that.
Okay. The first thing, because this is top priority in North Mecklenburg, there's a lot of tension. And there's tension from, you know, I'm hearing from the police about the length of medic hold, and I'm hearing from the fire department about the length of medic hold and the need to decrease medic hold. And so, before, before I let JP talk about that, I would like to hear some questions. But I also would like to, again, level set and have, I grew up with nuns all around me. And so, I think it's really important to have a mindfulness that these are all good faith concerns, it's justified frustration. But that we, and there's, there's no doubt there's frustration. We are committed to doing better. I will fight for funding for medic. But I think we need to, like, just remember that, assume good intention. I don't think there's been any bad intention of not getting the data. I don't know how complex that is, but there's frustration, and I think you hear that. I just ask everyone to assume good intention. The nuns would say that, like, don't assume that there's anything nefarious here because I don't think there is. And, you know, how can we track better? I'd love to hear from, personally, from the fire departments about how to do that. We need to be committed to continuous improvement. But also, like, if you look at the raw data, it's so city-centric, like, which happens a lot in Mecklenburg County. Like, the response time is so great, and it's so city-centric, but it needs to be equitable. It needs to be in the areas where the raw data shows that they're not showing up. And so, you know, as, I would like to hear, I have to have this before we move forward with the budget. I have to know what short-term solutions that you're going to have for the raw data that shows how bad the response time is, you know, where we can do so much better. What are your short-term solutions? And how are you going to respond to decreasing the hold time for medic, medic hold? Because that seems to be like a super-giant frustration. And so, if, if anybody elected would like to, you know, add to that, I'd like to hear what you'd like to add, so that JP can answer.
Can you define medic hold? I think I know what it is, but just to make sure we're on the same page.
So, I would like to have an official definition from JP.
Okay, thank you.
So, medic holds are a term that I believe fire departments use to describe first responder-only responses. And so, that is, that is how I understand they utilize that terminology.
Thank you.
So, you guys don't have anything to add before he answers? Okay.
Okay. Short-term solution is, I'll tell you that medic has had... Short-term solution is, I'll tell you that medic has had significant success in our hiring in the last year. Significant. We have gone from a, the worst staffing shortage that I think we've ever had in the agency to being back to fully or near fully staffed to our budget. And so we are on pace right now, if we were to be able to hire the 50 people that we feel that we need for this year, we are on pace right now to be able to have those people in the door before the end of the calendar year. And so in a short-term solution to get those people and to get the additional vehicles that we need, vehicles are going to be more of a challenge because it's 18 months to get an ambulance these days. But my team has created a plan, and it's an amazing plan, and has been working with our vendors to be able to quickly get at least a few, as, as quick as possible, as we work with them and our vendors to try to get these ambulances up and outfitted if they're approved. So the short-term solution is, you know, by the end of this year, certainly by the end of the next fiscal year, to, to have medic grown, to be able to, to put more unit hours on the road. But what I mean by unit hours is essentially be able to put more people and put more ambulances on the road as quickly as we possibly can and grow as quickly as we can now, while we, at the same time, look at the improvements and the changes that we need to make to how we track and report response times, how we improve the zones, and what that's going to take for the agency to be successful in the next years and then subsequent years to come on that piece. With regard to medic holds, so those are the first responder only responses that I talked about earlier. I've asked my team to go in and do a complete evaluation, deep dive into our data, now that we have nearly two years of data on response configuration changes that we made and the first responder only responses. And what they found is that there is a significant portion of those calls, and it's somewhere around a third of those calls that we look at, that we believe could actually benefit from having the ambulance respond immediately. And so we could potentially cut a significant number of those first responder only calls. That is something that we just started talking about with our board, just got the, the medical director involved, because this is just kind of hot off the press data and information, right? And so I think that there could be a, a real solution in the very near future of how we can make a significant impact and reduction to the number of those medic hold first responder only calls without having to do really anything different other than change how we respond to those calls and how we dispatch those calls. In addition to that, many of those medic hold calls come to us from police departments. And oftentimes, we don't get the information that we need in order to be able to understand what level of response our police officer partners need from us. And so there's an additional piece to this that's called the advanced send protocol. And we've been working in Cornelius with that. Thank you for the town of Cornelius, and I'll thank the police chief again. I did that last week in my presentation because we've started pilot testing utilizing that protocol. And from my understanding, there's already been some important improvements that have happened and some people who have received a better and more appropriate ambulance and fire department response because of those changes. We believe that if we're able to implement that countywide across all the towns and across Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department, and I have spoken with Chief Jennings about this, and so this is still a work in progress, but we believe if we're able to successfully implement that advanced send protocol, then we would have an additional reduction in first responder only responses, because essentially what first responder only responses are, are we don't have enough information to know if there's actually even a patient or not, so we're sending the fire department to go verify whether there's a patient. And if many of those calls come from police, and we can just simply have their dispatcher lay to us the proper information, we can know that, okay, there's really not a patient here, or yeah, there is, and we need to get an ambulance to that person in however quickly that person needs that ambulance. And so I think those two things together can and will have a significant impact on those medic holds, with the first piece that I talked about being something that could be done in the near future.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner.
That's really helpful and encouraging, and I hope inspires some, some optimism. Can you address, like, I don't want fire to ever have to not respond to a fire because there's like a super preemption that medic will always have on fire. Like, if there is, you know, a fire emergency, I want to be sure that they are at liberty to go address that, even if under the contract, they're supposed to be responsive to you. And I'm not clear if they have that latitude right now, and if they don't, can you address that? Because it seems like that's a very important interim thing to address and resolve.
So, yeah, I think there, there's a couple of things there. One is on low acuity calls, in which the fire department arrives on scene, does a medical assessment, and determines that the patient is not having a life-threatening emergency. There is a current protocol through our medical director, that's a state-approved protocol, that would allow those firefighters to speak to that patient, advise them, we're not having a life-threatening emergency, we'll wait on scene with you, but we'd like to place our unit available, in available status, in case a high priority call comes in or a fire comes in, so that we'd be able to respond to that since the ambulance is already on its way. If the patient agrees to that, then they stay on scene and they wait with the patient until the ambulance arrives. Or if a fire comes in, they can actually leave and go respond to that fire, and the ambulance will be arriving any minute thereafter to go ahead and assume patient care. That's one piece that's available today. However, on kind of the, the bigger picture piece, and especially on some of these more critical calls and sicker patients, there's no way to guarantee that a fire department responding to a medical call is, is going to always be able to respond to a fire call within their district if they're responding to a medical call. And oftentimes, especially on a call like a cardiac arrest, we require all of that help for CPR purposes and being able to move that patient, if we need to move that patient and get them to the ambulance. And so the fire department plays an integral role in that, and that's not a call that they're going to be able to leave and go and respond to fire. So it's going to happen, just like it happens in every other EMS system across the country, that sometimes a fire unit will be tied up on a medical call when a fire comes in. With that said, our fire departments have done an outstanding job of providing mutual aid, both within their own towns and within the city, but with their surrounding towns and even in neighboring out-of-state, if we're on the southern border of, of the state here. And so in those instances where one fire unit is delayed or tied up on a, a medical call, there are multiple other, and I think I mentioned in my presentation, I think there's over 300 fire apparatus in this community, there are multiple other first responder firefighters that can respond to that fire and ensure that those folks get what they need too. So there's a, a well-established and already in place system of redundancy to make sure that people get the fire response that they need in the event that they're tied up on a medical call.
Thank you. I heard of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to also mention, JP, maybe you could also speak to, you know, one of the things we heard was about not wanting to be dispatched to first responder only calls in the midst of fire calls happening, which is another thing that maybe you could speak toward to.
Yeah, it's, it's very important, and it's, you know, it's something that, if, if I can go back and just talk a little bit about just really briefly history of first responder only responses, these started in the city of Charlotte with Charlotte Fire Department. I think it's eight or nine, it might actually be 10 years ago, but I think it's at least eight or nine years ago. Started as a kind of a pilot, was very successful. We did that in the city for, for quite a, a, a long time before, in 2023, when we did our response configuration, we moved it to the rest of the communities within the county. So just so you know a little bit about that. But one of the concerns, and in fact, I think it's one of the highest priorities that I've heard when I've met with the fire chiefs, is that if they are on, for example, a, a multi-alarm structure fire, or maybe they have multiple multi-alarm structure fires happening, and that does happen in the city, that they want the, to have the ability to be able to say, we can't handle going on these low acuity first responder only responses right now. We need to be able to focus on our fire calls, and we 100% agree with that. We've had some really great discussions with the Charlotte Fire Department about that in our meetings. I've tasked my director, deputy director of operations, to work with Charlotte Fire Department Operations Chief on creating a standard operating procedure or protocol that we could look at and put in writing to something so everybody can understand how this might work in what situations, whether it's a significant weather event or whatever it might be, that everybody knows how that works. And also, you know, conversely, you know that that stuff happens to medic too. You know, we, we have that happen with our resources and with weather and all of that too. So I think it's going to be a good, a really good collaborative effort to come up with something that I think we can utilize countywide that's going, I think, solve that issue.
Thank you. That was precisely my concern. I'm glad to hear it's in process and it needs to be implemented as soon as possible.
I'd, I'd like to add.
Give me, give me one second.
Yes, sir, sure.
Mayor, Commissioner Walsh was, was next.
Yeah, we're good. With regards to the medic holds, and, and I, I'm sorry, you turned before I could ask the question. What we typically see is, to your point, a fire truck shows up, makes an evaluation, and then calls for a medic. You mentioned you're going to try to cut those by 30%. You know, what I see is you guys have limited resources, so you're sort of protecting those resources. We're sending, you know, a million-dollar fire truck out there to do an evaluation. And I'm not sure if I were laying in the street after, you know, falling off my bike or something and the fire department said, hey, we've got to leave, I think we're going to stick with them until you guys show up. So I, I think that's a problematic, problematic thing to ask a citizen who's laying in the street after a biking accident who's not going to die, maybe they've broken a leg, skinned themselves up, that, hey, we, we've got to leave, the ambulance will be here whenever they get here. So I, I think we need to find a way to cut these medic hold, freeing up our, our, our fire resources, and I, I don't see any scenario under which we would just bail on a, a patient laying there.
Yeah, understood. And, you know, our medical director is, is in the room, and I don't want to speak for him, but if I'm not mistaken, in a situation like that, if someone's laying in the street, that would not follow the proper protocol to leave them there. So it, that, that protocol has certain circumstances and where it would be permitted or not permitted to do that. It's not a one-size-fits-all, if that makes sense.
Yep. Mayor Walsh.
So I, I just want to put a couple of things in perspective per your question, Lee. And that is, I mean, we live and die by these mutual aid arrangements within our towns up in North Mecklenburg. It's critical, and they usually work pretty well. However, we, if you look around the county, JP's right, there are 300 fire vehicles out there, fire trucks out there. However, if you look to North Mecklenburg, we've got 11 throughout North Mecklenburg that's active at any one time. So it's, it really reduces the number. They're active, when I say active, that means they're staffed. And, and that, you know, if you have a major fire going on, it's going to impact that 11 in a real major, you know, way. So there's a little bit more to the story. It's, it's, you got to get that in perspective, and I, I just want to make that clear just to, I, I didn't want you to think, in, in my opinion, seeing 300 actively staffed fire trucks out there is pretty comforting, but it's really not quite that when you boil it down to the facts.
All right, Mayor Knox.
Yeah, so JP, you alluded to earlier that you were in a better place today than you've been in a while as far as staffing goes, which kudos, because I know it's been really hard. You know, we, we see that in police departments and fire departments as well. So that's a good thing. But one thing that you spoke to earlier was this pilot program where you've got a couple medics in a Tahoe or something like that. So on a high acuity call where we're first responders, our fire departments are getting there. If, in, like, in, in our case, where if my truck is, is on a high acuity call and I get a fire call, 50% of my department is at this accident and, and not able to fight a fire. If you've got the staff and you don't have to wait 18 months to get a Tahoe and outfit it, I'm sure it's a lot cheaper than an ambulance too. If these folks could come and ease the burden from our firefighters so they can go do their jobs, I think it makes more sense. They're not there to transport either, but, you know, if, if we're first on scene, but your guys roll, knowing that at some point if, if, if this is a call for carry, that an ambulance is going to have to be there to take somebody to a, a healthcare facility, but your guys are there for the triage and, and whatever, the wait time, so our firefighters can do their jobs, I think it makes more sense.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we, we did some small-scale testing of what we called alternate response units. I did mention this to the, to the board last week. And essentially what we found with that is, the small-scale testing showed us we need more detailed testing, but what we saw initially is that it would be a significant financial cost to just be able to upload that, and then obviously an ongoing cost, because this is, would be a complete add. This would not be utilizing medics' current resources. This would be hiring more people and buying vehicles, like you said, we would use, you know, Dodge Durangos is what our, our non-ambulance units are, and yeah, we could get those a lot faster. It's a matter of understanding how, how many we need and how many people it would take to get to, to do that, and it's, it's 100% cost. And the other piece to that, that I think is, is relevant and important is, as I mentioned before, is right now 75% of medics' revenue is generated by the fees that we, that we bill for service. If we don't transport, we cannot bill. And so if we're now sending these alternate response units out to take care of folks and they don't get transported, we can't bill. So that's why I say it's really 100% or close to it of a cost. And would it be a, a great alternative? It may very well be. We need to test it and understand what the cost versus benefit of it is, and I think that's where my team is saying we need to do a little more evaluation.
Thank you. Did you have any follow-up? Just want to make sure we're not missing anybody. So, Beck, did you have something?
Sure. I, I just, in hearing this discussion about potentially adding, we call them QRVs, quick response vehicles, to, to your model, I, I really just want to implore the county commissioners to, to also think about the importance of data. Where right now, contractually, medic is providing the priority one response time compliance for the three zones, but as we started to peel back the onion and look at the data, the raw data, then that started to show that those numbers are actually lower. And then when you apply that to the potential for the eight zones, those numbers are actually lower. And, and my point with all of that is, you know, I think it's wonderful to think about medic relieving some of the burden that is currently on the fire departments by adding this new type of response. But if we're not able to look at the before and after of the call response times in each individual area, then it's going to be difficult to know if it's actually successful or if it is actually meeting your expectations for countywide service. And so again, I think another mark in the box of requiring a study would be a good idea, but to also look at what are the desired response times for each type of call in the county? And, and how do you want these areas to be defined and then make it a part of the contract? Because right now, you, you, it's, it's not that it's intentional, but right now, the contract is so antiquated that you're getting one data point thinking that, hey, we're, we're good, when in reality, the actual level of service is, is perhaps not that good. And then as you go down to lower acuity calls, it falls off from there. And so I, I do think that would also be important for all of you to understand, so that you're setting that expectation of what you want, and then ultimately, it, it would be funding it to know, are we funding it enough or not? I, I think we, we all want the same thing at the end of the day, but I think the reason why the towns have been so emphatic about the data is we're the ones who get the calls from the citizens, because they're wondering, everyone's confused. They don't know that medic is a separate function. And so they, they call us managers, they call our elected officials, and so we're the ones who are getting those calls when there are issues. But ultimately, it, it does come down to you. So I, I just, it feels like there's a disconnect. So I think we would be, we would certainly be supportive of that, but we would want to make sure that our citizens are still getting an equal or greater level of response than they currently are for the lower acuity calls if we do switch to this model. And the only way to know that is through data.
Yep. Well, thank you for that, and I appreciate all the comments. One of the things I can, I can speak to is that for this board in particular, I mean, data is important. If you look to my left, Commissioner Arthur Data Griffin is sitting in the room. So I can, I can guarantee you, if you watch our meetings, you know, he starts with data, ends with data, and then we all just chime in. So thank you for that, you know, thank you for that point, and I do think it's a, a good segue. One of the things I, I have heard. One of the things I, I have heard beyond the discussion that we've already had is the idea around funding has been, you know, it continues to come up, the conversation that I've had with individuals offline. Obviously, this is a concern, and you all know that we're going, we're all going through the budget process at this, at this point. And so, you know, as we are working through that and the manager and her team are working through that, Madam Manager, I don't know if you want to give any indication as far as expect, what the towns may can expect or what, how are you working through the process? Let me put it that way. I think that's a better way.
For the budget generally or in this specific issue?
Well, with, with respect to expectations around medic and the subsidy and, and just the funding aspect of what they're looking at.
Sure. So at this point, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the bandwidth to increase the subsidy to the towns and the budget starting July 1. We don't plan to cut the subsidy that we give that, that flows through us to medic, so that, you know, would stay in place. We don't have any, any intention of cutting that, but there's no additional dollars being appropriated for an increase in the subsidy.
Thank you. And, and one of the things, well, before I go on with that, any reaction as that landed on anyone in the room? Madam Vice Chair?
I'll speak to it, and then I would love to hear from our partners in the towns. I want to thank the manager for building that into the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, because I believe that'll give all of us the ability to hold a little bit of status quo, to take a deep breath, to try to hear and see what these innovations are coming, to talk more about the third-party study. We, for the residents to hear, nothing is changing. We are not out of cliff. We are going to hold steady state. We're going to try to work through these issues in a methodical way. So that's how I hear it, and I'm very appreciative to you, Dina. But I would like to hear how our partners received that news.
That's exactly right.
Well, I'll start out and say that I'm grateful, too, that it at least has been restored. It's not where it needs to be, but I think we've got a lot of work to do to figure out where it needs to be. I think there's a lot of, lot of new information that will land in our laps, county and towns, that moving forward will make a difference. So with that, you know, I'm good with leaving it like it is. Personally, I'm speaking for myself, not my manager here, who's pretty tight, but...
In a good way.
In a loving, mean that in a loving way. But at the same time, we do need to figure this out. Medic is going to cost more. Everything in the world costs more. So as we improve this service, whether it's JP improving it or whether we hopefully will still do this study and fund that part of it to give us a good measure of how we doing what in this county, you know, it's going to cost more ultimately. And I think to have this little breather, as you've noted, Lee, to give us a chance to figure that out and give the county, the county time to plan for it, you can't just flip a switch and, and increase a budget by millions of dollars, which it could happen. And you can't do that overnight. So that, that would be my take on it. But thank you for at least leaving it where it is.
And if I can add on from the town manager here. So I'm glad to hear that the county funding, the current status quo funding will remain as is. That's encouraging. There is a ticking clock, if you will, for some of us who have submitted a notice on, the technical term is termination of the contract, but really, speaking for Cornelius and I believe the others, you know, we're really looking for a renegotiation of what those terms are, in particular, service levels, data provision, funding as well. So I, I look to, you know, my county commissioners board and hope that what you've heard today will compel you to continue to think about everything you've heard today. And I hope there's a willingness to perform a study. And again, with the ticking time clock, one thing I would have a discussion with my board about is considering an extension to the contract with medic if there's a study coming. And I'm not asking you to answer that today, but I hope there's a willingness to consider that.
Thank you.
Just for a matter of clarity, so maybe for me, we didn't get letters from every town terminating their contracts. I think we only got it from two.
Cornelius and Hunter'sville.
And the city.
And the city.
The city. And so I guess this is obviously going to take a lot longer than when the contract is going to expire based on the, when you sent your letters in. And so we would need to ask that you withdraw your termination so that we're all on the same playing field while we work through changes to the contract for everybody, because it's not just for the three of you who submitted your letters, it's for the, all the towns and the city of Charlotte. So I would just ask that you go back and consider that, because we're not going to make a lot of progress between now and I guess the city is, is in July. So I just ask that you take that under consideration.
Thank you, Dina. Mayor Knox?
I would like to thank the manager for keeping the funding in place. I will note that we did not send a letter terminating, so hopefully we get a shiny penny. No, it's, we, this is a negotiable process. We understand that, all of us do. I'm glad the funding stays in place at, at the level it is right now. It, it's not a lot of money for any of us, but I think a lot of this is principle, too, and, and reparation for some, some of the expenses incurred by our, our various departments in calls for service. But I think this discussion today, I think, opens a lot of eyes for a lot of people. I, I think having a, a group here of elected officials, because at the end of the day, with the direction from our managers, we're the ones that are going to make the decisions. We have to hear from these folks here, because they're the experts. JP, your folks are the experts. We're not. Again, I'll, I'll say it again, we're elected officials, but we are bound by our duties as elected officials to represent our constituents and give them the best quality of life that we can. And I think being here at the table today is a huge first step in, in moving this in the right direction. So again, I'll just say thank you and thanks for keeping the funding in place.
Sean, I'll come back to you after James.
Okay, thank you. And these guys said it very well, what I was going to say, but I do appreciate restoring the funding. That was one of the things we wanted to come down here for, of course. But again, back to the point of, I think, the theme we've been reiterating here is we really want to improve the system, and we're a part of the system. We feel like we're teammates in the system, and it hasn't always felt like we're great teammates with each other. So I think part of this has been, help us with the data, make sure, don't take the funding. Let's talk about how we can improve things, and we're willing to be teammates, and this study will help us figure out what that looks like going forward. So I think that's really important, to connect these dots all along about what we're trying to do, and our intentions are good. As Commissioner Powell said, we really do want to be good partners. And at, at the end of the study, if this partnership changes for the towns and medic is fully staffed up and doing things, okay. I mean, we just want to make sure the service is good to the residents, and all our town residents or county residents, as y'all know. So we're all in this together. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Sean, let's go to you.
Thank you. I'll be brief. So I'm back to order of operations, and we've huddled multiple times over the last week on this question of whether we believe a contract or an MOU is necessary in order for us to provide EMS services. And our, our view hasn't changed. We still believe that we need to have either an MOU or a contract in place by the first week of July. So I would suggest that's still a priority for us, recognizing that that could be modified in light of the potential for a study and in light of the potential for longer-term conversations around the subsidy. And my hope is that if there is a study, there's an opportunity for all of us to talk about some guiding principles. I wouldn't hope to speak for any of the towns here, but it's, it's taken us decades to get where we are today. I think that's, that's fair to say. So we certainly wouldn't expect that there would be a, a dramatic change in, in all aspects of service delivery overnight, that there would be a dramatic change in subsidy levels to the extent there are transitions in either of those areas. It would seem reasonable that that would take place over a period of time. So once again, I'm not trying to speak for anybody else here, just acknowledging that we're sensitive to major disruptions in, in both of those areas, but I did want to make the point on the contract or the MOU.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yeah, you're right. All the, all the municipalities didn't terminate the contract, but the city of Charlotte, Huntersville, and Cornelius did, which is the vast majority of the, the county. Ours is in July. I don't think we'd want to, I can't speak for the board, because the board would have to vote on it, but we're not going to operate without some kind of MOU contract. In fact, we're not sure legally we can. So some changes to that would, would have to happen before the, the 1st of July. And, and again, echoing what everybody else said, we want to be partners here, but we need to move forward. And, and I would say that the study is quickly, that as quickly as that can happen, needs to happen, because that's kind of that first step to understand, are we doing it right? Are we doing it wrong? How can we make it better?
Gina, let me come to Gina. Mayor Walsh.
Okay, I've been quiet the whole time.
You, you have been very quiet. That's why you trumped the mayor this time.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat what everyone has said, but I do agree. I hope we can go forward with a, a study for this. And, and I just wanted to say thank you as well for continuing, continuing the funding from the Town of Matthews. We very much appreciate that. And it, it's working together. That's what it's all about, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gina. Well, said, working together. Thank you. Mayor Walsh?
Well, mine's quick, and one of the things, this goes back to something that Commissioner Powell said earlier. We do know what we would like to achieve with this study. We have a very specific list of things that I think our intent is to provide you folks with that after this meeting. Now, that might not be everything and all-inclusive as you see it, but from our standpoint, I think it's a good list to start from. So isn't that correct, manager?
That is correct.
We'll be providing you with that, and you can take that, add to it, or whatever's appropriate for you. So that's coming your way here shortly.
Thank you. Couple things I'd like to do before we wrap, team. We do have some other commissioners and got a little bit more time. I did want to give opportunity for a comment from Commissioner Griffin, Townsend Ingram, and Meyer, a couple seconds. So I'm going to start in that, I'm going to go in that order. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although I'm not a, a part of the committee, I really appreciate the opportunity here from all of, all of you that are together here this afternoon. I love data, you're right. I can't speak for the entire board, but it certainly leading to the sensitivity around some type of study, to be able to benchmark in terms of best practices wherever. There are three things, three quick questions. I've got two minutes on one minute. I've just jotted down to myself. How do we solve for ensuring the new model does not disadvantage any community? What specific data or trends prompted the recommendation to move from three to eight zones, geography, population, density, call volume, or other factors? And what key performance indicators would be used to evaluate the new zone model going forward? How do we do that? I love dashboards. Maybe there could be something coming in the future, but I appreciate the opportunity to listen to all of you and look forward to a resolution, because as I said on April 15, every elected official, federal, state, or local level, first priority is public safety.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me a chance.
Thank you. And Commissioner, you don't mind if we address those questions offline, right? Can we follow up with you on those questions for the sake of time?
I'm hopeful that-
Thank you.
-the study and presentation will, will answer those questions.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
This has been so enlightening. As the new, the newest tadpole, as I like to say, in the pond, I, I'm an educator, too, and I love data, just like Commissioner Griffin. I love information. I equate, there is never a time when I say, "No, that's too much information, and why should we not, you know, do a study?" Even if, at the very least, we learned something new that we didn't know before. We have systems that we have in place already that can do different things that we may not understand. So I think that's an opportunity for growth. There's always an opportunity for growth. And I want us to be able to work together as well to, and I think also, like Commissioner Powell said, all of the intentions here are, are excellent, are good. So I think that our community can be really confident in the fact that we're trying to do the right thing by them, just figure out the best way to do it. So I appreciate each and every one of you around this table. I appreciate your comments, the alphabet soup of acronyms. I'm over here and Googling them. But I did learn a lot, and I really appreciate your professionalism and your dedication to service, even the ones, you know, sitting over here dedicated to be here, sitting in this meeting, not uttering a word, but listening to all of this, and this impacts you the most. So very much appreciate that on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say I think it speaks volumes that we're all here in this room, speaking about this subject and trying to come to a conclusion for the betterment of all our citizens. We're all here for one reason. I have a deep amount of respect for all of you. JP, thank you. And thank you to you awesome guys in the back out over there. It's probably been hard for you to be quiet back on the back. But thank you all, and we're all, and we're all here for one thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the commissioners for showing up. I hope this is an indication of how important this is. We have another commissioner who is out of town in New Orleans or would have been here, and another one who had another engagement. So I hope this, again, is an indication of how important it is to this, to this board. And what I'd like to do at this point, we've covered all of the agenda items. Obviously, there were things that are takeaways, but I think the, the biggest headline, no pun intended, would be around the steady state of funding. And I want to publicly thank Dina and her staff for being able to help us navigate those choppy waters, as particularly as everyone was trying to put together their budgets and concerned about that aspect of an ability for us to, to at least move forward in some sort of way. So I definitely want to say thank you again to Dina for that and having that awareness and that visibility to do that. Before we wrap, I want to give everyone a minute for a final comment. And I want to just start with Mayor Phillips, and we'll go around the table and we'll do just, just a minute and level set before you leave.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. And I'll echo just for a brief minute about what was said. I, too, would still support the third-party study, and, and I appreciate everybody, their willingness to come to the table today to discuss this. It's very important for us to address it. The Town of Pineville did not sign off as far as ending the contract, but we do feel the pressure of this, and I certainly don't have the answers. Listening to some of the comments and information today, I somewhat think there may be staffing issues. I don't know what full staffing is for medic. I've never been, that information's never been shared with me, so I'm not sure. But I do know as far as the hiring process and retention in first responders is tough across the nation right now. So I don't know if that plays a role in this or not, and, but I do recognize everybody's concerns and also everybody's support in this. And I would just ask that we don't kick this to the curb, and we keep looking at it, and we get some kind of answers and address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Do you have any to?
Thank you, Dina. Thank you, everybody, for your time. This was very helpful. I've got a T-ball game, so I'm going to be-
I got you, city.
I just want to say thank you to all the elected officials for trying to work through this. I think, you know, both healthcare systems and the medic board, I think our biggest concern was that we're coming to loggerheads and we're putting the citizenry and patients, perhaps, in the, in the crosshairs of these decisions. So thank you for taking this issue seriously, putting this together, and trying to find a way to work through it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. JP?
Yeah, I'd just like to take an opportunity to thank everyone in this room, especially our, the elected officials around the table, but our fire department partners in the back, my folks that are behind me. Thank you, Juan, for being here. Thank you for having the open, candid, you know, honest discussions that we were able to have today. And most importantly, thank you all for your commitment to this EMS system and trying to make it the- the best that it can absolutely be for our citizens in Mecklenburg County, because I think we all want that. And so I just want to say thank you from the EMS person sitting here at the table. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Yeah, I want to also emphasize my thanks to everyone for being here, and just know that our questions are honest questions, you know, and I really appreciate you guys bringing your honest feedback. I really felt that the intention here, everyone was on the same page, and so I just really appreciate how everyone approached the topic. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
So last night, I was driving home, and I had to stop at a stoplight. And I looked to the left, and it was etched in the wall, and it said, "The safety of the people shall be the highest law." And I got goosebumps because, you know, when you think about priorities, we have a lot of priorities. But Commissioner Griffin calls this a first-order priority. And so that quote was from Cicero, a very long time ago. But it's in my mind, and I really appreciate everyone's open dialogue, because we have to hear different experiences, different perspectives, different everything, to come up with the best solution. And that's what we all want, is to make sure that you can look your constituents in the eye and say, you know, we are doing the best we can. And I am committed, like, I will not back down from making sure that with the data, the raw data, that where we see inequity in response time, that we will have an interim solution to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh.
I don't have any famous quotes like Commissioner Powell, but I think we'd all agree that public safety is our number-one responsibility at any level of government. Clearly, as you look around the tables or the seating here, we've got our county partners, medic partners, a lot of the towns. So I think we need to keep our foot on the gas. The urgency of this needs to stay front and center moving forward, because clearly there's something going on. We're not quite sure what. But I would just encourage everybody to, every day, continue to address this until we figure it out.
Jackie?
And I would like to thank the manager and the chair for helping facilitate this. My representatives at large, and my District One representative, thanks for the ear. I know you probably hear from us more than you would like to at times. This has been very advantageous, and thank you. And I would also like to take this moment to commend our firefighters for being as quiet as they've ever been in their lives. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, everybody. And, you know, it's, if you put it in perspective that we all really want the same thing at the end of the day, and that is a world-class medic system here to serve our entire county, including all the towns, the six towns and the one big town. And that, I won't say that makes it easy, but that, if we keep that in mind, I'm confident we'll get there. So thank you. Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for putting this together. I'm giving you credit for doing that. We needed this meeting, as you know. And you had the wisdom and the foresight to do that. And thank you for your time. Thank you, Commissioner Altman, and certainly Commissioner Powell, our own North Mac representative. She's with us all the way here, and we're certainly grateful to that. So it was a good meeting, and I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to thank all the North Mac County Commissioners for your time for today. Very much appreciated. And thanking to everyone who attended. And lastly, I would just like to thank all our first responders for their service.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be redundant but brief and just thank everyone. Thank the board for their willingness to have this important conversation. Thank Mr. Peterson, county manager, and her staff for providing additional perspective today. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Griffin, you got any one saying, well, in comment? Commissioner Meyer, she left. Commissioner Townsend Ingram? Commissioner Altman?
What I would say is that first, always, our medic and first responders and firefighters, we salute you and thank you. I've said it before, I'll say it again, there's a lot of dysfunction in politics, especially at the national and state level. I am so honored to work locally with each of you around this table. I know you. I admire you. I respect you. I thank you for the spirit that you came here today. I've learned from you. I've had my mind changed on certain items. This is how progress is made. So I'm just extremely grateful to each of you here today. And I'd like to thank our chairman, Mark Jarrell. I don't really recall something like this, where we have convened a public meeting with all stakeholders for something very contentious. And, you know, this is, I just think it's been incredibly constructive. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just say thank you to everyone. I do want to take this opportunity to recognize Councilman Edrigs. If you'll stand, sir, please. Thank you so much for being here. Councilman Graham was here also, so we really appreciate you.
Conversation, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. I think these are issues that our past due. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Certainly want to lift up our first responders. JP, you and your team, thank you so much for your expertise, for being here today and just being so open. Really, really appreciate that. To all of our friends and colleagues to the left, thank you all for your work. Like I said in the beginning of the meeting, you all are always, you're putting your lives on the line on a daily basis for all of us. And so just to say thank you sounds hollow sometimes, but I know everyone around this dais means it. The other thing I would like us to lift up and remember that one of the goals for this meeting was to hear from you all, for board members to be able to hear, to be able to absorb information, to be able to not be the experts in the room, because we're certainly not. We rely on our staff, and I'd be remiss if I did not lift up our staff, our amazing county manager and her executive team, which we, as a board, are just so thankful and grateful for what they bring to the table, and the staff of our partners as well. And we can only resolve these issues by working together. Everyone came in here today with a spirit of collegiality, came with a spirit of being constructive and solution-oriented, and the residents of Mecklenburg County are better for it, better for us starting a conversation in a framework that we have not since I've been on the board, that we've done it previously, where electeds have been around the table. When I reached out to the manager and said, I'd like to put this together, this discussion together, within about 60 seconds, there was an email out to all of you all. And that just reiterates her openness, her willingness, and, you know, her ability to come together, even if it's a tough issue with our partners. And I think it demonstrates her commitment, and I was just in awe at that time. And as she is winding down her tenure, I think this is an opportunity that I will not let pass, to thank her for her service to this county. And everyone in this room knows what Deana Diorio has meant to Mecklenburg County and beyond, and I want to take this opportunity to recognize her. And with that being said, we have some action items that I know the managers and staff will take care of. The board will absorb a lot of this information. I think we will, we heard you, I think we heard you guys want some kind of study or something. I think we kind of heard something about this study thing, so we will talk about it. But again, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for your time, and we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.